Okay, we will call to order the special meeting of the board.
Alderman Elsa. Alderwoman Cavallo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso. Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Present.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderman Newjame.
Present.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Taldean.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver. Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Dijo Vincarla.
Here.
Thirteen present. All right, we got fourteen present, one absent so far.
Okay, we have a quorum. We're gonna recess for a moment until the mayor comes in, so everybody just stand at ease, we're gonna recess till the mayor comes in. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Mayor?
Good afternoon, everybody. How are you all today? Thank you all for coming out to the special meeting. So tonight, we're just gonna present to you our budget. And I just have a couple of points I want to highlight, and then Sarah's gonna take you through a more granular review with the slides and everything that you're used to. So I just want to say thank you to the people who put this together. This budget reflects a lot of the hard work that was done by the Budget Development Committee, but also by all of our department heads. It's a collaborative effort, the department heads, the financial people, and all of the people in the department to put this together, to make sure that we're doing the right thing and spending every dollar purposefully, so that we can improve our services, enhance our infrastructure, and keep Waterbury thriving. So... This budget holds the line on city spending, so I'm gonna give you just a few highlights before I turn it over to Sarah. But the budget this year is forty-six million, six-hundred-twenty-seven thousand, fifty-eight dollars. It's actually ninety-five thousand dollars less than last year's adopted budget. And it's about six-point-seven million dollars less than the department heads had initially asked for before the Budget Development Committee went through it, worked with them, and was able to bring it down. So we've held the line on spending. The mill rate is proposed to hit forty-four-point-nine-eight, which is a deduction of about four-and-a-half mills from last year, where we had a mill rate of forty-nine-point-four-four mills. The motor vehicle rate's gonna be set at thirty-two-point-four-six, which is the cap that the state sets on these things, and it's the same as it was last year. As a result of that cap, because the cap comes down, as you know, we get a reimbursement from the state between the car mill rate and the mill rate that we charge, that's a deduction of about four million dollars in state money coming this year, because the difference is less than it was last year. And then, as we talked about about two meetings ago, four weeks ago, there's another two-point-five million because of the change in the assessment for the motor vehicles, and we decided not to move forward with the alternative. So that's gonna, that results in about a two-point-five million less in state, or in income coming back. So it's about a six-and-a-half million dollar loss over the car taxes this year. The grand list as a total is about six-point-two billion in assessed property value, which is an increase of about five-hundred-and-three million dollars over last year, just under nine percent. Last year, it was about five-point-seven billion dollars. And as you know, this is the third year of a four-year phase-in of the 2022 revaluation, which means that this year, about seventy-five percent of all of the assessments are now included in the net grand list. And as you remember, when we talked about this four years ago, there was a shift, or three years ago, there was a shift from commercial property to residential property in the value. So rather than doing the increase in the assessments all at once, the board agreed that we should do it over a four-year phase-in. So we're doing that as well this year. That's gonna result, and Sarah, I think, has, you have the slide on the, how it works for different people, right, the ups and downs. So for most properties, it's gonna be a tax increase of about a hundred-and-twenty to a hundred-and-fifty dollars for the average homeowner, but not for everybody. Some will go up a little bit more. Some homes this year actually come down, not a whole lot of them, but some actually come down. And then with the car taxes, the adjustment, most car taxes are coming down, but as we talked about, some are going up, twenty-year-old and older will go up, some newer cars go up. So overall, the tax bill for people, for some people, most people will probably be about the same, may come down a little with the cars, some will go up, some will come down, but it will all be within that range. And Sarah can talk you about some examples of how that works, but every circumstance is gonna be a little bit different. So you'll have to take a look at your tax bills and see what it is exactly for everybody. As of today, the new assessment will be on the calculator that's on the website, so you'll be able to go figure out what your house taxes will be in the July bill, based on that calculator now with the forty-four-point-nine-eight mill rate in place. This budget also has the five-hundred-dollar tax credit for the elderly, the local elderly tax credit stays the same as it was last year, it's five-hundred dollars. The other thing this budget does, it includes fifteen additional police officers through the COPS grant, which this board approved earlier this year, called, we applied to the feds. So we can add fifteen cops when we hit three-hundred, and we're just about at that three-hundred. We hit it for like two days, and then through attrition, we were down to two-ninety-eight, but we'll get back up to the three-hundred. And once we hit that three-hundred, we can use the COPS grant to hire up to fifteen more police officers. The feds will pay half, the city will pay half. That's included in this budget at this point as well. So that's, that's good news for us, because once we get above that number, then the attrition will be fluctuating just above three-hundred instead of dropping below it the way we do regularly now. So the other thing that's included in this budget is this thing that I talk to you about all the time, and I know everyone says to me, 2001 was a long time ago, it's old, old history right now, but the truth is, we're still paying a lot of the bills for the problems that we, that were incurred prior to 2001, particularly with the pension and the health benefits that were never properly funded. So as part of this year's budget, eighty-six-point-three million, or about sixteen-point-two, two-eight mills, goes for those liabilities that were previously incurred, both the pension and the OPAT benefits that were never properly accounted for. That means that the city's budget, three-hundred-and-sixty million, is available out of this number for education, public safety, garbage, recycling, snow removal, public health services, recreational programs, and all the rest. That's the money that the city's really running on. So that other piece is gonna be in the budget all the way through 2037 because of the bonds that were issued back in twenty, 2007. So there's thirty-year bonds that are out there to deal with the pension problem. Once those go away, there's gonna be a lot more flexibility. But keep in mind that out of the four-forty-six, and out of the forty-four-point-nine-eight mills, a chunk of it, eighty-six million in cash, sixteen mills of that, are actually going to pay for things that provide no services. They're an obligation, we need to pay it, it's the right thing to do, and we're gonna continue to do that, but it doesn't go for any of the services. So if you back that out, if we didn't have those obligations, if all of that had been done properly twenty-five, thirty years ago, your mill rate would be somewhere about twenty-nine mills today, and your taxes would be significantly lower than they are today. So that's where we are, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah. She'll take you through a more granular look on it. I know you guys are gonna be setting up meetings with department heads, we'll be back to talk about it some more, and at that point, we'd be happy, once you've had a chance to review it, to answer any questions and see where we are with it. Okay, again, thank you all for coming tonight.
All right, obviously, you should all have your budgets on your desk, and to make the presentation is Sarah Gary.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Sarah Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm here to walk you through some of the details, as the mayor said, of the fiscal year '26 proposed budget. Once again, the mayor used a Budget Development Committee to advise him during the budget process, and I'd like to thank the members of the committee for all of their hard work throughout this month's long process. I'd also like to thank, as the mayor mentioned, all of the city department heads and their staffs for their efforts to submit responsible budgets once again. I'd like to give a special thanks to the Photostat Unit of the Town Clerk's Office for all of their assistance in assembling and printing the books, especially Keith Barron in that office, as well as the IT Department for their assistance here tonight. And just to give you a little background on the budget development process, it did start back in November of 2024, when departments started formulating their requests. The requests were due back to the mayor by the beginning of January. That's when the Budget Development Committee reviewed all of the requests and started to formulate the mayor's proposed budget. That process finishes up around the middle of March, so that we can prepare the budget that you have before you tonight. You have the general fund budget book, as well as the proposed capital plan for years 2026 through 2030. I think I say every year that, once again, it was a very challenging budget development process. It doesn't get any easier. We usually, we don't have an unlimited pot of funding to work with, so unfortunately, we aren't able to fund all of the requests that we receive. So we started out with projected revenues of four-hundred-and-forty-six-point-seven million, which is the amount that was budgeted in our fiscal year '25 budget, and we had requests from the departments of four-hundred-and-fifty-three-point-three million. If we were to fund all of those requests, that would have resulted in a six-point-six-million-dollar increase in the budget year-over-year. And you could see on this next slide that six-point-six million would have represented a one-point-four-eight percent increase, and again, that's if all of the department requests were fully funded. In an effort to contain spending while still adequately funding the city's obligations and services, the Budget Development Committee cut six-point-seven million dollars from the requests, and this resulted in an overall decrease of ninety-five thousand dollars year-over-year, or a point-zero-two percent decrease. This slide shows you how we arrived at that total decrease of ninety-five thousand dollars, and it shows some of the major areas of the budget, and whether they increased or decreased. You could see that the contribution to the Education Department did not change for fiscal year '26, that remains at a hundred-and-fifty-eight million, three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. It's been at that level for a number of years now, and that is our minimum budget requirement, so we do have to fund education at that level. Our general financial health insurance contribution decreased by four-point-five million dollars for a total general fund contribution of sixty-five million for fiscal year '26. The Health Fund is in a stable position at this point in time, it's also benefiting from increased investment income generated off the fund's reserves, so it provided for the opportunity to reduce the contribution in fiscal year '26. This is something that we do evaluate annually, and felt that we could reduce the contribution for fiscal year '26. Debt service, that contribution decreases by five-hundred thousand dollars year-over-year for a total of twenty-two million in fiscal year '26. This continues to support our capital improvement projects on both the general fund and education sides. Our contingency account increases by one million dollars for a total of two-point-five million in fiscal year '26, and this is largely related to a number of labor contracts that will be outstanding as we begin the new year. So possible wage increases for those unions would need to be funded by the contingency account. The white-collar fire management and school nurse supervisor union contracts all expire on June thirtieth of 2025, so possible increases are included in the contingency account. Our internal service fund and other operating charges portion of the budget decreases by one-point-five million. Part of that is related to a decrease in our contribution to the Capital Improvement Fund for fiscal year '26, which is another contribution that we do review annually, and we felt that we could accommodate a decrease to that funding level in fiscal year '26, and that's a fund that has also benefited from year-end surplus transfers in previous years. The Retirement Board budget overall increases by just under six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand. The public safety area of our budget increases by two-point-seven million dollars. That's largely in the Police Department, and as the mayor mentioned, the budget includes funding for fifteen additional police officer positions, and there's a five-percent GWI for the Police Union that's budgeted in this budget as well. And as I just mentioned, the Fire Union contract will expire on June thirtieth of 2025, so possible increases for the Fire Union are included in the contingency account. Public Works is increasing by about six-hundred-and-sixty thousand. This department has a significant number of blue-collar employees. That contract is settled for next year. It includes a step increase and a one-percent GWI for that unit, and that is included in the different bureaus of the Public Works Department. And there are also increases in various other areas, such as municipal solid waste and bulky waste disposal accounts, which combined increase by about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for next year. And then all other departments, there's a total increase of about one-point-four million, which is partially related to labor contract increases, and then also the rising costs of goods and services throughout the city. The Budget Development Committee does work very hard to control the mill rate as we start off with this process. We do scrutinize every expenditure request, and so when our work was done, we did end up at this budget of four-hundred-and-forty-six-point-six million, or six-point-seven million dollars less than the department requests. And it's very important to note that, like, the work doesn't stop here during budget development. We manage the budget all year round. The departments all do a very good job with controlling their budgets and managing within the amounts that are appropriated for the upcoming fiscal year. We appreciate all of their assistance throughout the year, but it's an ongoing job throughout the year. This slide contains some of the major points of the budget. The mayor has mentioned several of these. The mill rates, the proposed mill rate again is forty-four-point-nine-eight for real estate and personal property. This is a four-point-four-six-mill decrease from the current year. The motor vehicle mill rate is proposed at thirty-two-point-four-six. This is the cap mandated by state law, and it's the same as it was in the current year, and we do expect to receive a motor vehicle mill rate cap grant from the state of Connecticut in the amount of thirteen million dollars, and that makes up for the difference between the, because the motor vehicle mill rate is lower than our real estate and personal property mill rate, that grant makes up for the difference, what we're not able to collect in taxes locally for motor vehicles. The water and sewer rates are being held at the same levels as fiscal year '25. I had mentioned earlier that the contribution to the Education Department will remain at the same amount. We are expecting an increase in our ECS grant from the state of Connecticut. That grant is expected to increase by ten-point-five million dollars. That increase is all on the Alliance Grant side, which goes directly to the Department of Education. That's expected to increase to eighty-seven-point-two million. So combined, the general fund and the Alliance Grant portion amount to two-hundred-point-eight million in fiscal year '26. The mayor mentioned that we did have an increase in the grand list, the October one, 2024 grand list. Fiscal year '26 is the third year of the four-year phase-in, and this means that seventy-five percent of the increases in real property assessments are now included in the net grand list. This slide does show some different scenarios, as the mayor mentioned, of what tax bills will look like for households next year under the proposed mill rates. As the mayor mentioned, everybody's situation is a little bit different. These are just meant to be a few different examples. You may see a household, these all show households with two cars. You, those households, some may go down, some may essentially stay the same, and some may go up. But this is just meant to give you some examples of what might happen based on the assessment of your home, and then examples of cars that those homes may have. I would point out that scenario number two does include the average home. We've looked at this throughout the phase-in, and going into fiscal year '26, the average home assessed value will be a hundred-and-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars, resulting in a tax bill of four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars, and this would be a one-hundred-and-forty-nine-dollar increase from the current year. In scenario number two, that average home is shown with two vehicles that both have a decrease in the motor vehicle tax bill, so in that situation, their combined tax bill basically remains the same. But we also show examples, like I said, of a situation where you would see an overall decrease, as well as a situation where you would see an overall increase. This next slide shows our revenue structure, our budget at four-hundred-and-forty-six-point-six million. As we mention every year, is heavily reliant on two sources of revenue, and that's property taxes and state aid. You could see here that the property tax makes up sixty percent of our revenue structure, and state aid makes up thirty-three percent. The next couple of slides give some more detail to show how current tax collections are calculated. You could see in these charts that the three factors of grand list, mill rate, and our collection rate of ninety-six percent provide net amounts of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-point-four million for real estate and personal property tax collections, and eighteen-point-three million for motor vehicle tax collections. Between those two, they total two-hundred-and-fifty-six-point-seven million. That's what's budgeted for current tax collections in our fiscal year '26 budget. In this budget, the value of one mill is just under five-point-three million dollars. This chart shows the revenue we receive from other sources besides tax revenue. You could see here that we expect an overall decrease of two-point-three million dollars in non-tax revenue. State aid, not related to education, decreases six-point-seven million dollars, as you can see on this chart, and the decrease in the motor vehicle mill rate cap grant is a significant factor in that, and I'll have our state aid schedule on the next few slides where you'll see that. We did budget an increase in the category of other finance department revenue. We're able to increase budgets in the investment income account, as well as the fringe benefit from grants account in education. The significant portion of that increase, the one-point-three-million dollars, is related to an increase in the Special Education Access Cost Grant that's budgeted for fiscal year '26. These next few slides show Exhibit G, which is the state aid schedule. It can be found on pages sixty-eight and sixty-nine of the budget book. The figures for these formula grants on this page are those that have been included in the Governor's fiscal year '26, '27 proposed biennial budget. That's currently under consideration by the state legislature. You can see the motor vehicle mill rate cap is proposed to decrease by about four-point-three million dollars. And again, with our real estate and personal property mill rate getting closer to the motor vehicle mill rate cap, we receive a smaller grant from the state due to that factor. The municipal revenue sharing grant that you see, the decrease of two million dollars, that is not being budgeted next year, because the program has been eliminated in the state's proposed budget. On the next page of our Exhibit G, which shows state aid reimbursement grants, we budget these grants based on prior year history and the amount that we've received or expect to receive in the current fiscal year. Figures are not published for these grants in the Governor's proposed budget. And as I mentioned, we're increasing the budget for the Special Ed Access Cost Grant to a total of four-point-seven million dollars in fiscal year '26. And this, as you may recall, I believe was mentioned at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, that this is an area that the state legislature has put additional funding into in the current year, based on the five-point-five million that was received in fiscal year '24, and the expectation for fiscal year '25, we felt that we could increase that budget to four-point-seven million dollars for next year. So on this page, you could see that state aid in total is decreasing by a total of five-point-four million dollars, when you compare the expected amounts to be received in fiscal year '26 to the city's adopted fiscal year '25 budget. These next couple of slides again highlight some of the major points on the revenue side. Again, as I mentioned, heavily reliant on property taxes and state aid to make up our revenue structure. Our tax collection rate is, once again, kept at ninety-six percent. This was last changed in fiscal year '10. At the proposed ninety-six percent collection rate, one mill is equal to about five-point-three million dollars. I mentioned that we are using the formula grant amounts that are included in the Governor's proposed budget, but we will be watching what happens through the legislative process, and the state legislature is due to conclude their session on June fourth, so we'll be keeping an eye on that. And again, the general fund portion of ECS is expected to be a hundred-and-thirteen-point-six million, while the Alliance Grant portion, which goes directly to the Education Department, is expected to be eighty-seven-point-two million dollars, and together, those total to two-hundred-point-eight million. to be $87.2 million, and together those total to $200.8 million. Revenue to be collected from current taxes, that's real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles, is budgeted at $256.7 million. The budgets for delinquent prior year taxes, supplemental motor vehicle taxes, and interest on current and prior year taxes are all kept at the same levels as fiscal year '25. And this budget once again contains a potential use of fund balance in the amount of $3 million. This is less than 1% of the budget as city policy allows, and it should not be needed to balance operation as recent history has indicated. The next few slides will see where the $446.6 million goes. We talked about where the revenue comes from. On this page, you could see this does include the allocation of benefits to the departments, and on this slide, you could see that with that, 47% of appropriations are related to the Department of Education, with the next highest percentage going to Public Safety The mayor had mentioned this slide in his remarks. It's a chart that we look at every year to show the impact of employee benefits, which is one of the largest sets of expenditures in our budget. You can see that $114.8 million in the general fund budget is related to pension and health insurance costs. And then the bottom chart shows that the $86.3 million that the mayor mentioned, this is related to the liabilities that were previously incurred. This amounts to 16.28 mils. And as the mayor mentioned, we are fully committed to funding our obligations in order to keep the city on sound financial ground, but we do like to point out that it is a significant portion of the budget each year. And after funding the $86.3 million, there's $360.3 million left that funds everything else in the budget. Again, the overall budget goes down $95,000 compared to the current year. It's .02% less than the current year. The Budget Development Committee recommended $6.7 million worth of cuts in order to contain budget growth and to reach this final proposed budget. The general fund non-education budgeted position count is 1,093. This is 15 more than the current year, and as mentioned earlier, the budget does include the addition of 15 police officer positions. The contingency account has been budgeted at $2.5 million. Not only does this cover possible wage increases that I mentioned for the contracts that will be outstanding, but it is meant to be available for any unanticipated or emergency expenses that may come up during the year. As you know, I explained earlier that departments start this process in November, and their requests are due in January, and then this is for a budget that doesn't take effect until July and has to last them through the end of June of the following year. So there are things that may come up unexpectedly, so we do feel that we are adequately funding a contingency account for those things that may come up, and as you know, transfers from the contingency account are brought to this board for approval. And also, as I mentioned earlier, the Health Fund contribution in the general financial section of our budget is decreasing by $4.5 million for a total of $65 million. We also expect to get a contribution from the Education Department in the amount of $11 million to cover part of their plan participation. The fiscal year '26 budget increases the contribution to the pension plan by $723,000 for a total contribution of $49.8 million. The debt service contribution decreases by $500,000 for a total of $22 million, and this represents 4.93% of total appropriations. We do try to stay between 5% to 8% of budget, so that's just under the 5%. And Education Department's funding does remain at the same level at $158.4 million, and the Alliance Grant increase of $10.5 million will assist the department with the rising costs on their side. We do work closely, the mayor and his administration works closely with the Education Department throughout the year to monitor their budget as well, and they are seeing increases in a number of areas, including special ed, transportation. So we do try to work with them and keep an eye on what's happening on their side, and we do work well as a team together throughout the year on that. And the Education Department, including benefits, as you saw earlier in the chart, accounts for 47.4% of the general fund budget. As we mentioned, this budget does include the funding of 15 additional police officers. This is something that we're excited about as we start the new year. This will bring our uniform position count from 300 to 315 officers. We've received a COPS grant from the U.S. Department of Justice that will fund approximately 50% of the regular salaries of the 15 new officers, and the other half would be funded by the city, and that funding is included in that budget. Right now, I believe we're at 297 or 298, so we're getting close to that 300 number. Once we have 300, as the mayor mentioned earlier, we will be able to utilize the COPS grant to hire the additional officers over 300. Getting to the staffing level will greatly help the Police Department. They'll be able to better fully staff specialized units and help improve the quality of life for our residents throughout the city. So we are looking forward to getting those additional officers onboard very soon, and just like to thank the Police Department and the Human Resources Department, who have been working very hard over the last several years to recruit and retain officers. It's a lot of work in order to get an officer onboard, and I know the two departments work very closely together, so we appreciate all of their efforts to get the officers hired and trained as quickly as possible and get them out on the streets to again improve our quality of life. And this slide here highlights the Police Department, but we've talked about a lot of numbers tonight during this presentation, but just want to point out that behind those numbers, we have a lot of people, staff, department heads, who work very hard every day to provide high-quality services to our residents, everything from, we have a number of department heads and their staff here tonight, from the Health Department to Public Works and Engineering, the Water Department, the Fire Department, our Education Department, registrar voters, information technology, our legal department, finance department, again, human resources, our tax office. All of those departments appreciate not only the department heads, but all of their staff and the hard work that they put in each and every day, and again, their hard work in formulating their budget requests, and I think all the departments do a very good job at just requesting what they feel is needed to operate their departments going into the upcoming year, and they do work well with us when most of the time we don't have all of the funding to fund every single request, and they are willing to work with us and work together to try to solve problems, and I think we work together well as a team to do that. So after several difficult decisions were made, we ended up with the balanced budget in the amount of $446.6 million, which again is just under the amount of our current year Next, to just spend a couple minutes on our capital budget, you also have the proposed capital plan before you tonight. I just wanted to highlight that over the last several years, we've heavily invested in capital projects. We've made great progress in the city. As you all know, we successfully committed $75.4 million of American Rescue Plan Act funding by the December 31st, 2024 commitment deadline, and a significant portion of this funding has been used for capital projects. And just to name a few things that were completely or partially funded by ARPA, we opened the new Toronto Park on Mill Street, turning a contaminated parcel into a beautiful park facility. We installed many new playscapes in parks throughout the city. We've replaced the city's three outdoor pools with Hamilton Park Pool opening last summer, and Washington and Fulton slated to open this upcoming summer. We invested in underground utility improvements in the downtown area. We purchased new police cruisers. We completely renovated Fire Station 7 on Walnut Street and invested in Police Department building improvements as well. We are continuing our commitment to invest in needed capital upgrades in fiscal year '26 with a proposed capital budget of $75.3 million. This funds projects in a variety of areas, including streets, parks, schools, public safety, technology, water and sewer infrastructure, as well as a vehicle replacement program. The funding sources are state grants as well as local capital improvement funds. We will be seeking approval for bond authorizations in the amount of $7.8 million for general government purposes, for paving, demolition of lighted buildings, and a purchase of a new fire truck, Truck 3. A large amount of the capital budget, as you could see, $51.8 million, is committed to capital renewal and replacement within the city's water and water pollution control enterprise systems. A majority of the projects are proposed to be funded through water and sewer bond authorizations in conjunction with state clean water funds and drinking water state revolving funds, which provide grants in long-term low-interest loans. In conclusion, the offices of the mayor and budget control will continue to closely monitor the state legislative session that's due to end on June 4th. We look forward to working with you to schedule meetings with our department heads so that you can have the opportunity to ask them questions about their budgets. The board does need to hold two public hearings as well before we conclude this process, one of which you'll be scheduling tonight, and then our budget must be adopted per the charter by June 6th. So again, I thank you for your time tonight, and we do look forward to working with you on the budget over the next couple months.
Thank you, Sarah. With that, the next item on the agenda is to set our first budget public hearing. So with that, can I get a motion to set our first budget public hearing for Monday, April 7th, at 5:45 in these chambers? They had a motion. Second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the public hearing is set. Before we do adjourn, we're going to use April, Monday, next Monday, April 7th as our deadline to know what budget heads you'd like to speak to, which department heads, excuse me, that you'd like to speak with. If it's all of them, just email us whatever you want, but Minority Leader Rodriguez, I'm not sure if you're going to do it as one group or not, or if you want to just let us know, if you want everybody in, just let us know by Monday, and we'll set the schedule from there for next Monday. Okay?
Will do. Thank you.
And with that, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.